He enjoys that.
I need to, I need to call, I need to call the special call meeting to order for Monday, December the twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen, at ten a.m. Um, Sharon, roll call.
Here.
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 Okay, we'll move on to the prayer of Vice Mayor Ray Harrington and immediately following, pledge allegiance to the flag.
Let us pray. We come to you now, Lord, for this town of the Bluff City. We ask all the decisions that are made in this, uh, meeting be for the best for the residents and the future of Bluff City. Um, I pray also that everybody remember the true reason for this, uh, season this year, for Christmas, that it, that it was your, uh, gift that you, uh, gave us everlasting life. In your son's holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, does anybody have any citizen comments? Sandy?
No. Yeah, I want to get out now.
Okay. Well, we'll have to wait a few minutes. He had to get some copies. Well, y'all can be looking over your papers that he's already given some of you. You haven't got your copy, you're gonna have your. Mr. Wilson, we're gonna turn it over to you now.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank y'all for having me here today. I wanted to, uh, uh, go over our USDA project and then some other projects that we have in the works from the water and sewer systems, along with some updates on, uh, schedules and the, uh, projected, uh, costs. And, uh, first of all, to begin, um, you know, we're in the middle of our USDA project and we've completed, uh-
Contract one.
Y'all just please at any time stop me, I'm just, I'll get going and if y'all have any questions, anything that you'd like to ask. You know, our USDA project, it consisted of three different projects and contract one was our, uh, uh, pump station replacement, where we replaced the, uh, pump stations at the State Route three ninety bridge and at the Igloo. And we ended up also having to replace the force main from the Igloo to Lakeview Drive with that project. Um, that project was substantially complete in December of twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen finalized. The total bill was, uh, four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, more or less, uh, with that project. Total, make sure, four hundred and fifty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars. Iron Mountain Construction Company from Mountain City had worked on that job and, uh, it was actually substantially complete in December seventeenth, twenty sixteen, and finalized January sixteenth, twenty seventeen. From that project, we then went into contract two, which is the Water and Sewer System Improvements Project. And that project, uh, the agreement was entered into on May twenty-first, twenty eighteen, and it was substantially completed on July twenty-third, twenty nineteen, so earlier this year, back in July. Uh, with that contract, approximately one million, nine hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one dollars were set aside in rural development monies for loan for the town. And as of the date of substantial completion, uh, with the approval of all the project activities to date, we had a funding balance of one hundred thirty-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars and seventy-four cents on that project. That was mainly due to lines that had been identified earlier in the projects, which were now determined to be in good enough shape that they didn't require replacement and allowed us the opportunity to jump over and replace lines in areas where we felt it was much, be better served. And from talking to, uh, staff here, that was recognized as Main Street. So with Main Street, with the Main Street improvements, uh, outstanding, it was agreed that we would come back and, and place our resources there. We had a couple of restraints on us. One of them is that the, there has been, uh, approximately thirty-eight thousand dollars of stored materials, uh, our materials that have been purchased for the contract and stored to date, and they are of the water line nature. So the work going forward that we have the funding balance for, we need to do water line work to use those stored materials. That was, uh, would be a caveat for that work. And because of that, we feel that based upon the, and the contractor has agreed to use the same unit prices for the work, we feel like we can get approximately eleven hundred to twelve hundred feet of the water line along Main Street replaced. That line work will be substantially harder than in the other area that we had it proposed and, or, I don't know if it was hard, but there will be more restoration because there's curbs and gutters and sidewalks and things like that in the way. Now, long term, uh, the, the main thing that we need to do with that is to complete an environmental report, which I have the complete report here that we need USDA to approve before we can do the work. Once that's approved, we understand it'll probably be about a three-week process, uh, is what we were told back in the meeting in September. But I've also come back and with our environmental report have added some other proposed projects that I'd like to talk to you here in just a few minutes. If, or when the environmental report is approved, we can authorize Thomason to come back and re, and do those replacements and hopefully that will be right here in, in the winter and we can get those completed. We also have, uh, two, one punch list item that I'm aware of, when they come back to pave, we'll need to do some paving in town. And other than that, I'm, I'm unsure if there's any other activities out there that remain un, unfinished at this time, but we will go back and, and look at all those items and that's down at the service station there. The, uh, third project, I'm sorry, do y'all have any questions on any of those first two? I'm jumping ahead.
I'll just wait till the end.
Okay. The, uh, the third project, what's proposed, uh, will be the water treatment plant improvements. And with the water treatment plant improvements, we've, uh, we've kicked that one around quite a bit since the beginning and it has changed in its scope and character. I do feel like, uh, we have arrived at a scope for the work that will be extremely beneficial, or the most beneficial to the town, uh, from all standpoints that I've seen to date. We've talked about in the past adding storage reservoirs, which I think that's a future consideration that has to be taken into account. We've also talked about replacing backwash tank and we have talked about putting in some type of sediment basin at the wastewater, or at the water plant to give us a little bit of flexibility when the water gets turbid coming out of the spring, whenever it rains, it gets cloudy and causes, can cause the plant to shut down. Well, all of those are good projects, good capital pr, improvements projects, but I feel like that, uh, some of, and based upon discussions with the operators now, and you can probably verify this, the, the day-to-day operations of the plant are still not as streamlined as they could be and should be. It makes it very hard when you're dealing with multiple individuals that need to have the capability to operate the plant at any one time and then to report upon and actually answer questions that you all may have month in and month out about your water production or why did we go down? And there are numerous issues and they all come back to the actual control and the running of the plant and so, and the current electrical system setup of the plant. So, uh, in dealing with Ms. Grindstaff, we have come back to a scope of work, which we are restating in a P E R revision for R D that will be, we want to fix our controls and commands of the water plant so that we'll operate automate, automatically as it was intended to and not shut down for unknown reasons and not give us problems when we don't, that we can't understand and that sort of, of, uh, fix. With that, I would think we would still keep, long-term, those other items out there and our eye on them, such as the additional storage reservoir. What this automation and control of the, or, uh, change to the controls, for instance, is coming up now upon further investigation, the actual need for a backwash tank may not actually be necessary because we've, our controls have been set such that we've been using more water to backwash than we probably should have. So problems like that, I think, will, will be sussed out with these changes in the, in the command and control of the plant and maybe eliminate at least one of those problems and, and hopefully too, the other one being the turbidity and the plant shutting down when it does get, uh, a lot of, uh, cloudiness or, or high turbidity units reporting. It may be that we actually have more flexibility there with the, with the improved command and control we'll know about. So with that, again, we are revising the P E R and I intend, uh, to have that submitted by the end of the year. And we actually have USDA is trying to set up a meeting, I think, for January tenth or afterwards and we'll go back over these projects with them. Now, long about this time, we have had, of course, the business of the city is quite a bit more than just this USDA project. You all do have other items that need to be attended to. And I'd given you a handout, we actually had talked to, uh, TDEC and this is essentially a, uh, an agenda along the lines of what we talked to TDEC about. And I can go over this in detail or I can, I can boil it down, as y'all may prefer, I'll just, I'll start into it and you all, uh, stop me. Again, we just talked about number one. Uh, the second thing was the description, we're getting back, jumping from water back to wastewater and talking about our service areas and our lift stations. Essentially, the city is divided up into zones and those zones include the State Route three ninety lift station at the bridge, that about forty percent of the city flows to that lift station. From that lift station, flow is pumped to the Igloo. And then the Igloo accepts gravity lines, probably about forty percent of the city again, so it's pumping, the Igloo is then pumping eighty percent of the flow of the city. And the third thing is the garage pump station, which accepts flow from the Union Street area and is it Duty Drive, Jeff, or, Alan? So the, and the garage pump station also pumps to the Igloo. So between those three, I would say a good ninety percent of the city flow goes to the Igloo and then needs to be pumped to Lakeview Drive. Uh, we did, back in the summer, there was representatives came on from, uh, Alan had notified me that we're having issues with the garage pump station and that that, it's currently operating at one-half of its ultimate capacity that needs to be able to. There is a pump down and, uh, I don't think it can be repaired, can it, Alan?
Uh, like, uh, we're pretty much at the point where, uh, all the rails, the die rails and all of that, basically, as you must did to the point, no standstill we used inside it. I guess, um, in the past, they used basically the cheapest material they could purchase at that time, but, uh, those materials do need to be replaced at this time, along with upgrades of the pump, uh, the garage pump station is the lone pump station that hasn't been upgraded. All of the other ones have been and also what needs to be added is a skater-
Can everybody hear, Alan? Okay.
What needs to be added is a skater system, like right now, uh, on the garage pump station and with the Igloo, uh, not Igloo, but the Biggers pump station, there isn't any dial-out system. We basically got to, uh, depending on the citizens to see the light flash when it comes to the Biggers and the, uh, garage pump station in order to get a notification that there is any issues. Uh, those are the two pump stations we see the least amount of, um, uh, issues with, but these are issues that need to be addressed in.
With the garage, the work that Alan is discussing, we actually had a third-party call-out and, uh, WASC O N, W A S C O N, and they came and did some work for us. They gave us their third-party opinion, which yes, as Alan has just stated, it's, it's in bad shape. It was put in at about ninety-two or ninety-four corrosive environment and the cheapest materials were used, uh, basically, and you're at the end of its design life. It's been over just about twenty, twenty-seven years, I guess, something along those lines and the, the materials are eating up. And again, biggest worry is that there's only one pump operating and by code with TDEC, we should have two duplex capability.
My worry is if you get two pumps going, Igloo will have more overflows than what we had before.
It could, uh, and getting to that, the, they did a drawdown test for us while we were there and with one pump that is running, uh, that pump station flowed quite a bit more than we anticipated. I anticipated around, actually to begin with, thirty gallons per minute, but it flowed eighty-two gallons per minute. So that, and that leads into part of what we would like to propose, and it's on the garage station pump, that schematic that I handed out, is to, uh, redirect the force main, and I know we've talked about this, to, to take it away from the Igloo and to cross the railroad and get it into the Lakeview line, as is shown there. So, uh-
Alan?
Um, when it comes down to that, uh, we do need, uh, some work to be done at the, uh, garage pump station. In my personal opinion, if we're looking at it percentage-wise, I don't, uh, I just don't think that, um, the, uh, by, uh, moving that line to Lakeview Drive, I mean, if we're looking at it as ten percent of, uh, the city, overall city's flow is going to the Igloo pump station, I do feel it's gonna alleviate some of the flow that we got going to the, uh, Igloo, but I don't firmly believe that it's the garage pump stations that's putting our issues over the top causing these overflows because that's pretty much after it passes the, uh, bridge and then gets down to the Igloo, like the, uh, um, the manhole that we're currently seeing our issues at is further up. And, uh, I do feel that it's gonna take some flow away, but I don't feel that it addresses the main key issue that we're seeing, uh, from the other eighty percent of flow that's coming from town.
Cause it's on this side of it.
Well, I agree with Alan, that's replacing that force main or moving the force main is not gonna do anything to solve our problem at the Igloo in terms of the flow that gets there. I mean, what, and he has identified another line along railroad street that's up on the other side, definitely that work needs to be completed, any work to replace the old line and the system. What this proposed change would do is, and if you can jump with me, if all, we were having a rainfall event and all the pump stations are running at their capacity at one, any one time and we're having peaks coming together at the Igloo, the Igloo itself is gonna flow about three hundred and fifty gallons per minute. So therefore, it's gonna have a har, with the three hundred and fifty, we've seen it's having a hard time keeping up during those, and it usually has to be a one or two-inch rain within an hour or an hour and a half and, of course, that's what we've been getting. And what this would do, thinking we're not that far away, the garage pumping at eighty-two gallons a minute, so it would be a, a takeaway of eighty-two gallons per minute from that three fifty, which what Alan's saying is absolutely correct. The water that may be coming in from these other areas may exceed that, but it allows that takeaway to occur immediately. It's not gonna solve the problem, it just takes it off of the pump.
Well, we've been down there and watched it before, I've been there maybe twice when they had overflows or when they had to pump it out. And when the garage shuts down, to me, it's, is some of that gravity, is it all pumped?
It's, uh, for the most part, uh, coming from the garage, it's-
Is it all forced?
Well, it, it goes into the top of the hill and then it gravities down to the, it's a little bit misleading. From the garage, it pumps up to the top of the hill and then it gravity flows from the top of the hill down to the Igloo.
Cause you can tell when, maybe the second pump was turning off then, something was turning off and the flow would be almost cut in half.
Yeah.
And then the Igloo pumps could catch up and, and take, take the level down. But when that, when it was coming full blast from the garage, the Igloo couldn't keep up.
See, I think that would, that would represent, if the pump were running, the one pump were running, that would represent the eighty-two gallons per minute that comes there. And so if you were to take that away during that time period, would it help the Igloo during those specific peak flow periods? Again, like Alan's saying, to really fix your problem, we still need to go into the system and replace sewer lines and get them out of ditches and all those types of, of long-term projects, expensive, long-term projects.
Well, what happens if we start over, sorry?
Go ahead, go ahead.
What happens if we start overflowing the Bristol pump? I mean, is there, is there a possibility we could start overflowing down there?
Uh, yeah, there is. And that was one of the main, uh, again, it's a related rate problem, so it's kinda hard to grasp, but we, early on, you know, the question came up, well, why don't we just put the biggest pump we can find at the Igloo, biggest force main and we'll just send her on down? Well, USDA specifically told us that they wouldn't fund that to move your problem to them. They wouldn't be a part of that. And in part two, uh, we did, I personally received a call from, at the time, Tim Beavers, he was Assistant Public Works, or, he was Public Works Director, he's now an Assistant City Manager, and told me that they were really watching the flows there at Lakeview and they could tell that we were getting higher flows since we started our job, so-
When we got completed, they said it increased by a tooth, about a third or better.
Yeah, they're sending, so we're sending more flow there and we, if it came to an issue that they lost their ability to pump, I'm sure they would, and they would already be in the process of making capital improvements and they'll probably come to the city and ask for help, ask for funding assistance and maybe some type of prorated.
Carl, have you a question?
What I don't understand is, you know, we have spent a lot of money and I didn't realize that the Morris were still having overflows. I thought that was taken care of.
I think there's been one there.
Well, I'm not sure, but are we kinda guessing that this is gonna take care of the problem? Because this is gonna really end up costing us more money if they have these overflows in their yard, you know?
I, I can't tell you that we'll never, that these overflows will ever stop. I mean, I would be, I would be telling you something wrong to do that.
Is there anything that we can do to try to fix this problem? Because, I mean, they shouldn't have to live like that and nobody should. And the city's spent out all this money and we're trying to get this thing taken care of.
I think what you've done is, has been the most responsible thing since the period of time that it began. If, with this program should have probably started twenty years ago.
Right, but we can't do nothing about twenty years ago, I'm talking about now, you know?
I, I, I do firmly believe, like, some of the issues that we recently found when it comes to controlling how much flow we're getting, I believe, uh, in essence, uh, our overall issue is our stormwater issue, it's not the sewer issue. Um, and from what I've seen in these last couple months, is, uh, controlling the flow that's coming off of Main Street that goes down, um, Carter Street, supposed, the stormwater is supposed to go in that ditch line that's along railroad street. But what we ended up finding is, of course, that whole ditch line was blocked up until, up until, uh, this past two months, we went out and we dug that ditch line out. And, uh, one thing I can say from the time that we, uh, had our, uh, last overflow, we've actually reduced how much, uh, flow was going to the, um, bridge pump station and pumping down. So I do feel that we're in the area where our main issue is, is just the unseen stormdrains that you can't see under the ground. I, I think there is something along the Thomas Hardware Store and I believe it's the Methodist Church right there, the storm drains, uh, I ended up doing some dye testing, uh, I ran the dye, uh, through the storm drain and I did end up seeing dye come out in the manhole near the railroad. So I, I do feel, uh, by getting the, um, sewer lines along the railroad airtight, that's gonna help our situation, but at the same time, we do gotta address our stormwater issue and how that's being conveyed to the ditch line because if we don't address that, we'll still have stormwater basically getting. And I believe we have a hole somewhere along that stretch that's allowing that flow to get into our sewer system because, um, like I said, I mean, I stood out there while it was raining, I saw the change in flow, the flow was abnormally high at that point and I, I do feel like, uh, we're at the point where we're kinda grasping at the main issue is just a matter of getting actual work done and, uh, just, just overall, uh, I can tell you this much, uh, from, in the past three years, uh, just that one, um, little change we, we've done, I've seen a significant change and I'm more confident that our issue is more so concentrated in that area and controlling our actual stormwater. Um, but, um, I do think we're, we're at the point where I think we may see some light at the end of the tunnel, it's just a matter of addressing the actual issue at hand.
Right. I just don't want the citizens to think that we're sitting up here and don't care about it because the mayor and the board, we care about it. That's why we're trying to help them get this problem solved.
Is there nothing we could put at those people's house? I mean, I don't know how, how involved it'd be to put a tank, something that would, if it did start to overflow, something that can kinda catch or contain the overflow?
Well, we've talked about that also and it seems like, uh, any type of large tank, of course, it's, it's a money, it comes down to a money issue. So think about this, uh, settling upon the volume of that type of tank would probably be the, the main issue. And based upon what's happened in the past and how many times we've pumped and hauled, you know, I would probably recommend doing something twice as big. So if it's, Alan, if you can tell me five thousand gallons and then, so we would have a ten thousand gallon tank or something like that, instead of a huge, huge tank, because what you get into with the huge tank is another maintenance issue. It gets filled with this water that's set aside and then it's gotta be repumped and reintroduced back into the system and the biggest problem to have is it'll sit there, maybe for days and go septic and then we've got a, a worse problem, you know, something stored there that's got the odor and then I think it may be an additional permitting. But yes, we could discuss something like that. I think it's, I don't know, I would need to actually check the cost, but I would say you're at six figures, it'd be more than a hundred thousand dollars.
Well, and another thing too, you say think about the money. If we don't get it fixed, we're gonna be paying out money because there'll be suits.
The, uh, I mean, again, like Alan, his idea that we're replacing then the, the wastewater line he's speaking of, you know, that was not shown on mapping or anything. You all discovered that, I guess, didn't you?
Well, I mean, we, we, we thought it did end, ended, uh, in a certain area. Well, uh, what we ended up finding out after we camered the line, that line actually stretched further out all the way down to the, um, Marble Place and, I mean, and this is all smack dead in the ditch line where the water is supposed to be conveyed to, uh, go under the road or on, uh, Holstein and convey to the lake, uh, and, um, this, I mean, these are just things that kinda need to be addressed, um, these, uh, lines that, I mean, I'm still kinda, we're still learning the system and there's, uh, some new stuff that we kinda found, uh, probably should, uh, we've, we gotta do that, a better job of mapping our system. But, um, there's, there's a potential issue that, uh, that, uh, needs to be addressed along with, uh, we still, in this town, we still got a bunch of, uh, man-made, uh, manholes that need to be, uh, replaced. Like I know that, uh, these are areas that will be tough to address, uh, like, uh, areas like the manhole, like Pizza Plus, it's a brick structure, I mean, darn right, that's, I've actually taken video of, uh, we got flow just coming in between the, the bricks. And I mean, we have over, I'd say, over ten manholes that are made that way that need to be addressed, but I know some of these issues can't just be fixed all in one wallop, I wish it could be, but, uh, these are, uh- But, uh, these are, uh, issues that, that need to be addressed. So I mean, we have to find out some kind of comprehensive program that we can get some of these old-style manholes replaced along with addressing some of the issues that we have on Main Street. Uh, one other area that, uh, I wanted to touch on was, uh, right outside of, uh, City Hall here across the road. Um, we have, uh, a half inch line that basically serves like ten customers along each stretch, like everything. Uh, going down below, uh, the pump station, uh, those lines have been upsized. But from the, uh, basically the garage, I mean, the igloo pump station up to the, um, post office that serves about half inch line. The condition of that line is in bad shape, to be honest, um.
You're talking water or sewer?
This is water. This is all.
That's what I'm thinking, sure.
These are, um, that's another area that we're gonna have to address some time in the near future. But, uh, I, I think once we kinda get Main Street and some of these older, like smaller lines, like I, I was kinda shocked that, uh, uh, even this section of there, I thought we probably had a bigger side line, at least a two-inch line that ran through here. But to see that it's a half-inch line kinda proves, um, but, uh, I guess that's how things went. We got a six-inch line on one side and then we, on the opposite side, the road being that it's a state highway. I don't know if that had anything to do with it, but, uh, that's something else that's gonna have to be addressed. But it's another, another, another issue.
Uh, along with those, with this idea, uh, these, particularly this item that Alan has just spoken of on Railroad Street. If you can see the second page of the handout, there's highlight, two projects highlighted, the proposed Railroad Street Sewer Replacement. It's about seven hundred and eighty feet and the proposed Main Street Sewer Replacement around four thousand linear feet.
And that covers what he was just talking about, that's about the railroad and all that.
Yes.
All the way down to the.
And the, yes, and for, to make the, the actual replacement that he's, if a contractor were to come in, like we just had our project and do the line replacement, you know, we're, it's, uh, will probably be about a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars to do that, seven hundred and eighty feet, which.
Have they started on permits with the railroad?
Yeah, and the, the actual, the other one is Main Street, but, well, we've not started the permits. I would like to, if, find the funding first. And with this and this document, two things have, have occurred since Alan had identified that project and the Main Street. And those two things are our subsequent meeting with TDEC and we all, December the third, we went to TDEC and talked to them. They actually convened a fairly large group, including three folks down in Nashville that are tuned, plugged into their funding mechanism, which is SRF, State Revolving, the State Revolving Loan Fund, which is an EPA source from what's called the Clean Water Revolving Loan Fund. They will team with USDA at times or others to make monies available. I feel like they were in agreement with the program we had proposed, including these other, you know, what we have done to date, plus these replacements that we are proposing again, but don't have funding available for at this time. But I have taken all of these outstanding items and we placed them in the environmental document that's going to RD. So if it comes up and they're, they have funding that may be available, then we won't have that hang up again. It'll go straightforward. And I'm hoping that TDEC will accept that same environmental clearance. And we've got our fingers crossed, Mayor, that they may, they have indicated that they thought they could find some funding to assist the, the town.
But we won't know anything until after the holidays.
Right. And it, it may be, uh, they mentioned principal forgiveness and that's the buzzword now for grant. And I'm hoping that, that any monies that are made available are at least at zero percent of a loan. And then hopefully with grant, which is actually to just be, uh, no debt incurred at all by the town. So.
You know, the thing about it is, um, we have Senator Lumberg helped us the last time when we had to have some, um, approvals. That when you get to that point, I think he would agree to, to help us again and how fast he got it taken care of. So that should help us. But David, there's one other question. Um, when we were talking about, uh, holding tank, do we, do we have the space?
I don't. It's, it would be very, very hard. We would need to do a survey, but I don't think we have the space on that side of the road. I think the houses are all situated and if we did do some type of holding tank, maybe go across the road up, maybe in the mobile home park or try to intercept it above the mobile home park and have something there possibly in between. But no, we don't down by the igloo itself and those lots, we don't with, unless you purchase a, purchase property and, and eliminate.
So how big is the tank where the igloo station is? Just so I get some kinda idea how deep we're talking.
The, the tank there, I think it's a twelve-foot wet well, I think. Twelve-foot diameter.
It's twelve foot in diameter, um, trying to figure out the deepest up deal one that we have. We're actually able to hold a, a, a lot, but I mean, what we're getting in, what we're taking on is like in normal conditions, we don't even embrace anywhere near the capacity. It's just the rain that's better seeing, uh, these major issues, but.
Wasn't there another tank there before and we filled it up and then put this new tank in? Is that how that worked?
Yeah, we had to remove the old tank, put the new one in. There was a suction lift tank. And it, this, the new tank essentially replaced the old tank for the wet well of the pump. Uh, that wet well, the pump at twelve-foot diameter, it's about nine cubic feet per foot and that would, uh, hang on here, I'll tell you, give you a better idea. One hundred and thirteen cubic foot per foot. And how deep do you think it is, Alan?
I wanna say it's around fourteen.
So around seventeen hundred and ten gallons when it's full. And that, I mean seventeen hundred and, uh, ten cubic feet, which is, uh, eight times, about twelve thousand eight hundred gallons is the size that's there now.
Twelve, twelve thousand gallons?
Yeah.
And what's the most we've had to pump? How many trucks have we had to pump out of that thing? What's the most? I thought we had like nine or ten.
I mean, that all kinda depends on the rain event, but I mean, and.
Well, I know, but it say, out of all the rain events we've had, what's the most that you think that we've ever pumped out?
Probably like somewhere around eight loads.
At two thousand gallons a load? I can't remember what this truck, or thirty-five hundred gallons?
They're, uh, around twenty, twenty-five hundred, uh, nineteen hundred gallons, so the trucks that we basically.
So about, about two thousand, so six, two.
How much does that truck cost in us every time it comes from?
Uh, the price, uh, can differentiate, uh, depending on who they're using and the size of their truck.
Well, just around a couple of.
Around about three hundred dollars for the first load and then after that, uh, they'll, uh, go by the hour.
Okay, cause we're continuously spending money on the trucks and you said something about finding, uh, funds. We need to find some kinda funds so that sewage or wastewater, whatever, stop going to these people's yard. Because it's gonna cost the city. It's gonna cost us. If it's our fault, the city's fault, there'll be lawsuits.
It, it actually came up in our meeting with TDEC about trying to, uh, see if there was some way they could help us to get a truck.
Take a back look. So we're figuring about twenty-five hundred gallons per truck? Is that what we said? Is that what you ended up coming up with?
Eighteen, two thousand.
So roughly around twenty-three hundred.
We'll say twenty-five hundred.
So then that's.
About twenty thousand gallons.
Twenty thousand?
It, it could be, and again.
A forty or fifty thousand gallon holding system?
Well, no, I would, again, it's a, that's a total flow and what you have taken out. Now whether or not you would be overflowing during the time you're continuing to remove, it comes back to it being a related rate problem. So it'd be more in, in, in terms of what is coming in from all three sources at one time and then what you're taking out. So I think we should talk about it in terms of gallons, gallons per minute, like I was.
Okay.
And so, you know, trying to remove eighty-three gallons per minute, you know, you would, you know, eighty-three, enter three, I'm gonna use three fifty. I'll verify that number, but, you know, you're talking about doing this force main rearrangement, I'm, I'm, if it were pumping at its capacity at the same time, the others were at their capacity, if it all came together at one in the worst case condition, Alan, you know, which ten percent of the system, but it would be twenty, twenty-two percent of the flow coming to the igloo would be removed. Whereas if you, again, talking about the, the total volumes that, that may or may not hold true in that case. Because you don't know that those other pump stations are pumping to you at the same time that the igloo's continuing to run. Does that make sense? It's, it's a tough little problem. I mean, it's one that they give all engineers in school that everybody flunked on, so.
The pole and three off would, would help tremendously. I have to say, you're talking about the Railroad Street.
Yeah, that's the ultimate thing that you need to do to remove the flow, yes. And, uh, and Alan said there may be a hole somewhere. I think it's the, every joint and pipe and it's concrete, Alan, man. Clay.
We ran into edge plastic in one area. It turns to clay terracotta and it's, it's kind of been pieced meal together over the years, so.
So what funding do we have right now to do? Do we have any funding to do any of these here other than?
No, we do not.
Pump station.
We do not. The funding is not available for the, for, uh, these three projects that I put in front of you. They're our latest, what we've kinda came down to, uh, the garage pump station and that force main. Roughly the force main redirect is, that's, that whole thing, the total construction estimate is a hundred and sixty-four. The force main component, that's about sixty. The, uh, Main Street and Railroad Street, you can see there they are, uh. And we were, we were hoping that we may get so lucky as to have TDEC come back and, and have some type of package that they may have available, uh.
Yeah, because they actually, actually asked us what could actually be done to take care of the problem, cause they don't like it anymore we do. And so I think, I think they'll get back with something. It may not be everything that we want, but I think they really will try hard to help us out.
Have, have we submitted these to them for possible?
We have to wait for an answer back from them, cause they are actually working with the people in Nashville and.
They do have copies of the information.
Yeah, they do have copies of the information, but.
Yeah. And the, and I don't, I mean, um, this is a special call meeting and I mean, I don't mind stating it. The, what the city has, the town up until this date, particularly this administration and the previous that moved forward with this funding package, you all are, I mean, this has been, I would consider it an aggressive approach to your problem. There's not many towns in bluff city that can go, bluff city size in the state of Tennessee that can go back. And if you, uh, consider the work that the, the town has completed just in the last few years, we are, uh, let me make sure that I tell you something similar or something sort of correct. Yeah, between the, uh, the past improvements, uh, if you all can recall, along State Route three ninety before, we did about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars worth of work. This is since two thousand two. McClellan Street was a hundred and seventy thousand. We did fifteen thousand in manhole rehabs, the four fifty-one in the pump stations and then a million in the line replacements. So I can tell you, there's not many communities of town of your size that has done one point four million dollars worth of work in their wastewater system now. Probably should have been more like five million dollars worth of work. But I think the one point four, and boiling all this down, we know of, we know of this one place. There may be others. I don't, I, I don't ever wanna get caught in that, cause at one time we suspected one above State Route three ninety, Alan. Another overflow that's just out of sight, out of mind and does not get reported, cause it's not in a backyard. If TDEC were to find something like that, or if that were to be found, it would be just as bad as in somebody's backyard. But given you have this one issue and you can't downplay it or minimize it, it's a terrible issue. But you're, you're not different from any other community in the state that has the same problem.
But you don't hear about those?
Yeah, I don't understand that. Yeah. The, uh. Yeah, that's right. This past time, you all had the one overflow, I think, uh, Johnson City had about thirty, something like that.
Yeah, I talked to him over there and stuff like that, but you didn't hear none of them news or nobody talked about them?
And then includes the actual sewage going into people's houses.
Yes.
I hear people talking, I hear people talking about it. And what gets me is when you actually see it with your own eyes. Uh, feces and all that stuff all over the yard. Yeah.
The biggest, I know one of the biggest things, again, and I know with the folks that live there, it's no consolation. During these rain events, it is significantly diluted. That means it's mostly stormwater. But again, if any thing gets out on the ground, it gets out on the ground. It would be, uh, the, uh, the discharge from the Bristol Regional Plant or from Johnson City, either one, I would say the strength of the wastewater treated is, is as much as that. But if it's in your backyard and it's happening, that don't matter of nothing.
As far as working on the, uh, water treatment plant, how is it?
I think we'll have, we've actually, uh, as far as the actual work that will be completed from an engineering standpoint, it will not be madder than Craig so much as it is a firm that we are contracting with called Lord and Company. They are experts in the controls and operations. So it'll be through your procurement with us that we're procuring them and I've used them two different. We replaced all the control and electrical systems at the BBU raw water pump station and at the waste, and at the water plant. And they also assisted with the city of Bristol and they've done, they, uh, they've worked here in the area, they're working in Mountain City. Also, uh, the, uh, Water Authority going up State Route ninety-one, I can't think of the name, it's the new Water Authority, uh, Wataga. They've done their work.
So it's the timeframe on all this where we have a start date possibly?
Well, we will, he indicated to me that if, uh, once our PER is approved, he thinks thirty days, he can have the document and we can go out. So, and he would be working very close with, uh, Ms. Greenstaff on that to make sure each one of her issues are settled. And then after our meeting in January, hopefully we'll have a better idea from USDA on the times, Mayor. But it, uh, I am, while it's not my bailiwick or the type of work that we're talking about, so to speak, I do feel that taking care of those issues will, will prove most important.
Cause we're keeping the tank floor up, you know, and everything.
Yeah, the back water canal, yeah, the water tank, yeah, and y'all, I don't know your purchase situation.
We're at, we're at thirty-nine, uh, feet in the tank this morning, uh, we're purchasing twenty gallons per minute. For the most part, uh, uh, probably, um, last week we were down, uh, just about half of the week due to the high humidity. But, uh, for the most part beyond the humidity issues, uh, the plant has been staying up. We've been seeing minimal, uh, issues. Uh, we have been doing those small corrections and, uh, changing our valves and stuff like that at the water plant. Uh, the main issue that we've kinda seen, uh, as of late, I believe it's something due to old coating that's still in the skater system, like this past weekend, we ended up, well, not this week, past weekend, but last week, uh, when it comes down to the, the skater system in general itself, uh, we believe that there's some old coating. Because like, uh, once it was time to restart the water plant, uh, the plant was telling itself that it needed to still shut down. And that was partially due to some of the old coating that was in there was telling itself not to turn on on certain, uh, levels. Until the level got to a certain point. And, uh, that's one of the things that we, we have to get addressed. Because I believe it's the municipality that has the, uh, that did the work on the skater system or whatnot. And, uh, we, right now, we basically, in order to get anything, uh, repaired on it, we gotta call them in to, to get the coating. But I believe they have the licenses, uh, on that system and the city doesn't. So I mean, like, we're pretty much at their mercy. Anytime that we run into skater-related issues, uh, we have to go through them. We're not able to address any of those coating issues. We're not able to address any of those coating issues, uh, manually, uh, or to self-train ourselves, uh, on that. Uh, beyond that, I mean, overall, uh, whenever conditions are right, the plant, it is firing, good condition. Um, I'm pretty sure we have some leaks out there that needs to be addressed, but overall I believe, uh, we're in a good state. Uh, when it comes down to the water plant, um, uh. Now from there, I think it'll be addressing the issues at the, um, spring box itself, uh, there, there will be, uh, upgrades that need to be made there. But, uh, beyond that, as in the water plant itself, a few low repairs here and there should satisfy where we need to be.
It's great.
The, the estimated, I don't know if I had told you the estimated cost or what's set aside in the USDA monies is about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the water plant.
Does that count that extra one thirty-four?
No, it's not. That's in addition to it. So overall, and all fees out and everything to date, there's probably seven hundred thousand dollars left out, something like that would be my guess.
And that's more than enough to take care of the system and stuff up there?
Hope so, yeah. Derek has. Derek Matthews is a gentleman with Lord and Company. He has visited and talked to us preliminarily. Some of the issues I think, uh, like Alan just addressed, which, uh. You know, I was not aware. I know Boggs did that system back in oh four, I think, and, and that they had a proprietary. Software like that. Was not aware of that. And then as Alan stated, I think the. When the plant should have been running, it was seeing another indication. It was from the actual tank in the system wasn't it, Alan? And then. Or possibly what they, we call an air relief valve. That was giving us this erroneous data and coming back and shutting the plant back down and things like that should get cleared up and with. What, uh, Mr. Matthews was with Lord and Company has stated. It would, uh, also be with, I don't want to call it exactly freeware, but with, uh. A system that anybody can come in and replace the latter logic. You're not wed to one person or. You have opportunities to use different people if you're unhappy, yeah.
Do you think that there would be a, a potential that there's a excess money?
No.
That's what I, that's the only reason I do what I'm, just trying to get that river.
I hope, yeah, I hope, I can tell you that I feel like the gentleman from T deck and, uh, I wish I could recall his last name. His first name was George. And he had been involved in, uh, one of our conversations early on, probably two years ago dealing with the lift stations and. He was quite honorary about it. And this past meeting we had, I feel like he had looked at the information that we had presented and. And Mayor, he's the gentleman that said, well, keep faith. It'll be, you know, you'll see a lot more darker days. Putting this money in and putting it in and then it, then it will turn around and, you know, but it's. And then he's the one that's gonna, he says, he was the one that said, well, I think we should have some money around down here for you.
This is going back around, uh, what's the potential cost for, uh, manholes if we were to put one in or something like that?
You know, uh, obviously it's all based upon depth and we generally figure like a five foot manhole to be a standard depth and we'll usually use five thousand dollars for that.
I'm just curious, would that be something that we couldn't do or we couldn't do?
Uh, I mean, I firmly believe every little bit is gonna count, uh, beyond, uh, what's going on with the USDA projects or whatnot. Just to say that we're getting some of these things taken care of outside of that, I think that would be the most responsible steps going forward. Because, uh, time isn't on our hands when it comes to these issues, uh. Uh, this town is getting fairly up in age and, uh, these are, uh, items that need to be addressed. Uh, it's just all a matter of prioritizing.
Do you all think that you all could set, set them?
Uh, some of the shallow ones, um, when it comes down to what's on, um.
Cause I'm, as the only reason I spitballed it was because of, uh, I didn't know if we had potential money in our, uh, that we could afford ourselves. To buy one, two here and there and send them in ourselves.
These are issues, uh, that needs to be, uh, looked into. That's just like, um, the manhole that's in your driveway. Something needs to be done ASAP, uh, regarding it. And, I mean, it's just not because it's an old brick manhole structure. It's other issues, but.
Yeah, cause there's, there's smoke tests right there to come out.
Sometimes the, this frame, this frame and cover can do, you know.
I just curious, you know, something that we could do ourselves in between.
I think, I really do, you know, along with what we, the work that has been completed, the C mom. Uh, work that you all now have in place and with what Alan and like the way he found this railroad street line. If his time continuously, whatever free time that may be, or it may be bringing people on that actually do that and to constantly be going out. Cause the guys here, you know, they're eat up day to day just trying to keep things going and you, you need to have people here that are taking this on and, you know, going and identifying these things. So TVing every day and, and, uh, keeping all the records of that TVing and then you'll identify more and more.
What about sealing up the, the manhole lids? Cause I know there's one right out here in the ditch line that. I've taken pictures and videos of water just running right across it when we have a big rain.
That's, uh, I think watertight frames and covers and Alan and certainly y'all are in, you could do that and. Those are probably, uh, eight hundred dollars. When we see their costs from a con, what a contractor gives us installed. So. If you have, you buy those and have six or eight on your lot and then as the men have time to go out and replace one here. You know, it may be a two day project for them, given that they're running and doing other things, but you know.
Cause resetting the manhole, that takes, that's a lot.
Yeah, you have to bypass pump and that's always dangerous. And then, you know, if causing an overflow somewhere that you wouldn't normally have. And, uh, but the frames and covers, yeah, you, I mean, you could easily do that in a day, I would think, Alan, or at least one. And dig and take the old one off, put the new one back on, make sure it's watertight, that sort of thing. And typically about eight hundred dollars installed.
Well, maybe we need to do an evaluation where some of the things that maybe we can do ourselves to save a dollar or two.
Right.
Because Alan's very knowledgeable and.
That's part of your C mom. That's, you've, you're, you've committed to doing that. And one of the things, the TVing. Or the smoke testing layer, you know, getting, uh, we've got about half of that done and need to do about half again. And with each time we do the smoke testing, you identify other things that you can possibly do in the house. And then at least Alan can then concentrate and follow up with TV work to verify in those areas where. You know, because say along Main Street, it smokes a lot. And then if he can, I bet if he could come back and we could. We could flood those outlets and do some dye testing while he is doing the camera work. Maybe, you know, our hope would be that we find a four hundred foot section that's absolutely rotten. And the rest of it's okay looking, you know, that sort of thing. But you really have to get down in the weeds and get involved to do that. It's time consuming for folks that don't have that time.
Right. Well, even if you have to hire somebody part-time, save a dollar or two.
Talk about camera and the lines?
I think you'll find in what I, in my experience, which has kinda come around over the years. Camera and the lines while you're simultaneously filling the storm drains with the, from a fire hydrant or, and dye testing at the same time. That proves the most beneficial in what's wrong in your system. You can actually, the smoke testing is good. It'll point you in the right direction. At that time, but then what that defect actually is, you don't know. But if you can catch it on camera, you'll know. Is it a join? Is it root intrusion? Is it a hole? You know, a lot of, all, it could be all those things.
Is that something we can hire out?
Yeah, now y'all actually can do the camera now.
Oh, we got a camera?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Alan, can you talk a little bit louder?
Oh, I, no, I just stated, we do have that ability for a camera on it, so, so that, that's, we just need to do more of it and, uh, find some solution to these, uh, issues.
Yeah, ideally, you know, and I, I know how it is here for you again with your men, you know, ideally you would have maybe two, two days, sixteen hours a week. You have a crew that's dedicated to that and then they're going, but I know finding that time is, is just about impossible. When there's so many, guys wear so many hats as is.
Right now's the time of the year though, while we're not having to vote everything.
Right. We may be able to get a lot done.
So what is our, so what's the game plan, I guess, to sum it up as far as the sewer? What's your recommendation for right now?
I feel like we need to continue with what, with the way Alan has been, you know, th- this identification of railroad street is wonderful. Continue with that work in the house. I think he'll find more issues as we go. So let's not drop that. And then once T deck gets back to us. Finding the funding for Main Street Railroad, Main Street Sewer, Main Street Water, we have funding for about eleven to twelve hundred feet for. The Main Street Sewer, that's the nine hundred thousand dollars estimated, the Railroad Street Sewer and then this garage pump station, which. Even if the force lane's not done, we're still looking at a hundred thousand dollars there, I think, to, to redo that station in its entirety as a duplex submersible like we did the others and to do the skater. Which is to get it networked in to where the guys are called out. And it's, that one, like you said, Alan, it's currently somebody, it's a visual thing, isn't it?
It's a visual thing, uh, when it comes down to Vickers at the garage, it's still a visual thing, but I mean, most people won't see the garage. You can hear the loud blaring, but, uh, beyond that, there's no dollar, dollar system or anything like that. Uh, the good thing is we never had to run into that issue, but it's something that needs to be addressed there. As it, it has some kind of dollar system to whereas whenever we do have issues, we don't have to depend on the citizen hearing it. Because our issue may have started at twelve o'clock that morning, but. The, that citizen may not hear it until four AM that, that same morning. So, uh, we need, uh, a rapid response on.
So given that and then. The response from T deck that we have, whether it's favorable or unfavorable with the funding and if it is favorable. Proceeding immediately with whatever we need to do to get that money. And if not, uh, look at going back to other sources like RD. And if, one of the things I know it's long overdue that I, that we need to look at are our project planning factors and. And we need to have a date to do that. I know to go back and actually assess, uh, before all this started, we went through, if you all recall a, a rate. Study more or less is what it ended up being and, and going back and forth with different rates and how we're situated with the incoming funds versus the outgoing, uh, funds. That needs to be revisited probably, uh, as a course of, of daily business anyway and to assess what rate. You know, so we never get to a position again where we're having to come in and that last rate increase ended up being fifty-two percent over six, six years. And we never want to get in that kinda shape again. And where if, worst case would be one or two percent annually. Which folks, I think, they don't like that, but it's the cost of business.
So if we only got a tenth, a part of the money, which one would we number these off as?
I would, uh.
Our station first?
I think the pump station is definitely, uh, that's the, while it's not the immediate fix for your eye on eye like Alan has stated, but. If that pump station were to go down, it would be, uh, an emergency. And then we would have, that would overflow right there in that bottom, you know? I don't know if people would see that or not. Of course you'd, you'd have to report it just like they did.
Yeah, we want to be straight on everything, no matter what.
What size pumps are up there?
The, uh, those were, the one was eighty-three gallons per minute, so, but I think it's a twenty-five horse suction lift and we would not want to go back with anything that big. And we'd do the submersible and probably, uh, five to seven and a half like it's at Vickers or the igloo. And so a lot, a lot of savings on the power, given the change in the type of pump. And then the, uh, something that would deliver along those same flows. If two were there running at the same time, it, it wouldn't be double. It wouldn't be one sixty because you have friction issues, but I'm sure it's over a hundred gallons a minute.
You know, the thing about this situation is. On Main Street. We've got to get that work done too. So how come we can't have two things going at one time?
Yeah, you can, that's what.
Because the fact that Main Street, we know is in bad shape. And I know that, um, y'all go out to take up some of the sidewalks.
They said he had the.
Talking about if we can, if we can work on that while they're doing the water.
Doing the water, but I, I just, I mean, just missing what's out there. I'd say by the time that water project starts, we're willing to fund more issues to anticipate. Uh, I kinda feel that's gonna stare into the sewer aspect, uh, while they're doing that water. So I, I just be mindful of the finds that we, uh, find while partaking, uh, those, um, renovations of Main Street. Main Street is one of the oldest portions in town that haven't been addressed in years.
Right.
I just think we're willing to find more issues than what we've already, or, uh, come to that. That's just my personal thoughts.
Well, it'd probably be a cheaper price anyway if we could work both of them at the same time.
That was the idea behind the other one, I think it was.
Mm-hmm. Well, maybe Santa Claus will come and visit us.
Probably somebody.
Bring some water guns.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything? Any rest of y'all have anything that you want to say or any other questions to ask him?
No, but I, I mean, I, I don't know a lot about these water lines, of course, but couldn't we have like a workshop and go through some of the things that maybe the guys could do? Or if you have to hire somebody, you know, just part time, just to kinda cut the cost?
Yeah, we can, we can have them.
Good idea?
Yeah, like sell off the manhole covers because y'all can definitely.
There's a lot that we can get done in-house. It's just all a matter of acquiring the materials and just trying to get to it. Like when it comes down to Main Street, we will have to be mindful that although buying the piping and all of that is not going to be that expensive. It's, uh, returning the, uh, areas back to its original state, like as in concrete, tearing up, uh, sidewalks, that nature. It's what we're gonna have, where we acquire the most, uh, spending on. So we, we will have to be mindful of that.
Well, it'll take time. I mean, a little bit at a time. I mean, it's progress.
Maybe that'd be something, go ahead.
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
I was gonna say, maybe that'd be something yourself, maybe in between things, get you a list of things that you believe that you all can do yourselves. And prioritize them as far as the easiest, you know, to the hardest. And then we'll just check them off as we go and get things moving.
That, that's a good plan going forward. Uh, it's just, uh, it, it all needs to be there. And we're coming down, I mean, the winter season is fast approaching, uh, so, uh, we're willing to start planning. We need to go ahead and start at least getting the plan together, formulate some kind of action for this, but, uh, I think this is a good step going forward.
Secondly, I want the citizens to know that we are trying to get this taken care of.
Exactly.
Right.
And the, uh, documentation of all that, that does fills in with the C mom workouts. So anything that you all have, all of your work orders. Any weekly schedules that you make for TV and, uh, we could, we need to document and then give that to T deck as part of our reports layer.
Okay.
Have we, guess, have we ever thought about subbing out the lawn mowing? The mowing?
Yes.
Once.
Oh, sorry. We were just talking about trying to free up time, so I didn't know.
Yeah.
Sharon, did you have any comments? Sharon, did you have any comments that you would like to make on funding or anything?
Well, there was like, uh, I think, uh, they have that schedule that I showed you how much water is going to Bristol to the sewer, uh, and it has decreased seventeen, uh, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, it's way down below what we had in the past.
And the, and the biggest thing, uh, which tells you the work that we did has really made a difference, it's just during that peak flow condition. Imagine this, we tightened up the pipes, so overall, the amount that gets there day in and day out is less, is improved by that monitoring. But during the periods of time when it's raining and stormwater is getting in, more gets there too, because our pipes are tighter, that makes sense. So during, during the time period that we've actually had, uh, that we have the precipitation events now, our day-to-day problems, it's getting better, the trend is great, but those peak flow times, it's, it's probably, we'll have to turn it on.
That's good.
Could we look at getting a pump truck?
Yes, I mean, we can look at it. Okay, we can go ahead and be looking at it ourselves, but T-Dak is looking at this for us, and they think that, I hate to say that something's gonna happen before I know it's gonna happen, okay? But we know, we should know something for them by the first of the year. But we can still be looking at ourselves and see how much it'll cost us. So, because it'd be awful for me to go ahead and find a truck, and we spend the money on it, and find out that they were gonna pay for it. But we should know something by first of, yes.
The city, uh, pump truck, uh, the only thing about it is, um, like with.
Operator.
Close to a hundred and forty thousand dollars on the truck, uh, somewhere in that avenue, how much use you can get out of it, uh, simply because, um, like, these, uh, overflows that occur at pump stations, I mean, they're, uh, depending on what Mother Nature has to, uh, offer. And, uh, like, uh, it was discussed that, uh, well, the city would be able to, uh, do work outside of, uh, just pumping for the, uh, uh, pump stations, but, I mean, whenever you engage into that, you run into legal issues, uh, when it comes down to doing work outside of.
I was kinda thinking we buy, if we could, if we could get one, we get it, then once, we get this kinda under control next few years, and we just, we sell it.
Sell, I, I, that's, that, 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 I tell you, going in, I mean, like, uh, once we get past the big help, uh, trade it. I mean, having a truck on hand, uh, that actually would help our, 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 I mean, it would help our issue because we'll be able to address these issues before we get to that, uh, overflow point. And, um, we would actually be able to, like, before the rain even gets here, or while the rain is, has, uh, started, uh, we would be able to start pulling and already taking some loads over, so, I mean, like, that's one of the issues that we've kinda ran into. Like, let's say, for instance, I'll call and put a truck in standby, uh, but we don't get the alarm like two hours later, and from the time that you get the alarm and, uh, call the truck out, it takes them about thirty, forty minutes to even get over here. So, uh, if we had a truck on hand, uh, we would be able to start getting what we need to get as soon as possible, but, um, it's one of those things that, uh, I mean, it would be a great idea, uh, I think it would help our issues, um, tremendously. But is it feasible, uh, for the city as a whole? That's the big question, and that was one of the things that was talked about in the last meeting with T-Dak. And then they get along the lines of, uh, is it really worth it because it's not addressing the actual issue itself? Uh, it's, I mean, the question of is it worth the investment of that?
But it could save us a lawsuit.
Well, that, that is true.
And that would be a big one.
That is true, I mean, I would love to have a truck. That would, that would, I mean, I was just, uh, had the capacity to just ask for items, that is an item that the city could use at this current juncture. Uh, after we got our issue taken care of, regarding the, um, the inflow that we're getting, uh, trading it, selling, whatever you need to do, uh, you'll be able to recoup some of that capital back, but, uh, um, until that, uh, is addressed, uh, we're still having to call out these trucks. So, uh, whenever we decide on that note, uh, I'm more than happy to, uh, invite the invitation of getting trucks, that would help, but it's not gonna solve our issue.
No. Does anybody else have anything else, or do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion, Jesus.
Okay.
One second.
Oh, he's second.
Merry Christmas everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Uh, yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Thank all of y'all for coming, and Merry Christmas.